Then you already it's going.
Ready.
That is live, so wherever you want to go.
Oh, it's on now?
Hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, I can test it. Yeah, that's working.
Well, we consider flag the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under invincible with liberty and justice for all.
Remember.
Okay, so ready for that call?
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm gonna start with Steve Bartol.
Here.
Susan Schneider.
Here.
Steve Carter.
Right there.
Michael George.
Here.
And Greg Gordon, who's on his way.
Everybody looked over the agenda?
We did. Make a motion approved.
I approve.
You second it?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, approval of the minutes for September eighth.
Make a motion approved minutes from September eighth.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, greetings, village citizens, staff, and members of the board. I've just returned from a much-needed week of R and R, and I'm energized and ready to hit the road running.
All right.
I want all of those who called or left messages to know, yes, I listen, and we are acting on your concerns. There are some things that need to be addressed in our new comprehensive plan for the village. I do want to point out, the plan is not a law. The plan is a vision, and we want that vision to be the vision of all the people of the community. The wording in some of the areas of the plan have caused concern. That wording will be edited to address those concerns. We want the people to have a voice, especially in areas where it affects full-time homeowners. I also want to address transparency of our board and the business of the village. We immediately began recording our meetings two and a half years ago on YouTube. We are very quick to manage the sunshine law request. And our website has all the minutes, agendas, recordings, and documents on the site, including a link to the ordinances. If anyone is having trouble finding these or needs help accessing certain information, please call or stop by City Hall for help. We do want our citizens to have all the information about the village. On another note, I am so pleased that our citizens are involved in the growth and maintenance of our village. We especially want to hear from the full-time residents. We may not be like Osage Beach, Lake Ozark, or Camden Town in the next ten years, but we do want to improve and grow our city for the future. Tonight, we will discuss future plans on water and sewer. This is our most important duty to the village, and we want citizens to have all the information about those plans. We also need to determine our spending on public work storage. We want to be fiscally responsible with the village funds. As always, I say, please call me or any board member with any of your comments or concerns. We do listen. Okay, we're gonna have a presentation, uh, first. First up is gonna be Jeff Meadows with the Archer. We're gonna have him speak.
We're gonna do visitors' comment?
I'm sorry. Visitors' comments, anyone?
I would like to speak as a citizen, as much as more or less as a board member. I realize I'm a board member sitting here, but the last two months have bothered me at my soul. I never got into this to be a politician. I got into this because my wife wanted me out of the house and put on, put me on planning and zoning. There was a opening on the board and, you know, here. And I think I ran three elects, but been here two years. I don't know how that's possible, but it's true. The phone calls and the meetings that I've been in and heard about, I feel are very alarming to me. It shows a lack of integrity in this building, a lack of integrity on the board, and that's not what many of us ran on. It's not what we should be. We're a small town, and if we have problems in politics at this level, Lord God, don't complain about any other one.
Sure.
Keep your mouth shut, live with it. But I have an incredible problem with that. If we break the rules, we should own up to it. If we, and I can't, if we, we have rules and ordinance and laws on the book about how this place is supposed to look, Sunrise Beach. We don't enforce it yet. Why in God's name would we, would we put more commercial property in the Sunrise Beach down any road other than five? If we can't clean the junkyards up, we go. Why? It makes no sense to me. I don't care what's down there, but let's clean the place up. That's why you can't get businesses. I know three people that left this side of the lake because this side of the lake looks like a junkyard, and they were boutiques. That's on us. That thing. But if we're not willing, if we're not willing to have the hard conversations or enforce it, then what the hell are we here for? Why are we passing the word? Why are we talking about anything? And I find it appalling that we just, I, I think, use our power, our will, or influence and try to get stuff through. I just, I had this, I had to say my piece because I am, in the last two months, I've fielded no fewer than thirty phone calls. And that is just not cool. And the cool thing is, that's thirty both. So, um, I, we, I, we have to do better, and, uh, that's, I just had to say that. So, thank you.
Michael, question?
Careful the question you ask me, because I will answer.
Okay, I want you to answer, because you've always been a straight shooter. Where, you're answering what happened about a subject, about commercial zoning, right? That's what you're talking about. The people came here and they said they didn't want it, and there were people who tipped off and keep people that weren't. So that's what you're discussing, because.
It's part, this is not all of it.
Okay. Could I, could I, could you be more specific?
Okay, um, that is part of, and that's, that was.
And I respect you a lot, you know that.
That was the spark that began.
Okay.
And then, here in the last little, and, and then, you know, it kind of kept going. It became, you know, in the last meeting, it was brought up about residency and people on the board and, and all of it. And we addressed it kind of half-partedly, but if that's true, and I don't know if it's true or not, but if that's true, that's wrong. It's just plain wrong, and there's no other way to say it. And so I don't know if it's true or not, but if it is, it's wrong. And then the next thing was, after that, the comprehensive plan, where we were, and we had maps in there, and we were showing places that we, and I know it's not, we pulled back on that, but still, we should be better than that. We shouldn't have floated that out there. And so basically, we were gonna designate certain areas as multi-use. And if you live in that area and all of a sudden you wanted to turn your property into commercial property, all you had to do was start the business. I'll be real honest, down to like Polly Live, some of Beachwood, there's a lot of commercial on there, a lot of money. Not big, for once you get past advantage, other than Polly, but ah, is our brand, but. And it looks like hell, and going down, is that bad for TT in front of Dollar General? I get it. Going down through there, and, you know, I've heard members of our own board make fun of Lori. Lori's kind of got one junkyard, we got fifteen. We have to do better, and that's just it. You're not, but we're not gonna get the businesses we want and the people we want if we don't clean ourselves up. And that's what I'm saying.
I have a question. Could you point out the, the, the populated properties of the junkyards you're talking about? Could you point those out to me?
I call, I call them junkyards because they're just unkempt. The very first house passed advantage, that, uh, the Mr. Carter's property further down the road.
Well, he's, he is up, the property queen there, the, the van's gone, and all that stuff he had out in front, that's all.
That's cleaned up too.
Yeah.
Well, then, then we just have different, different definitions, because then when I get up there by the laundromat, and you got two or three buildings there, one keeps a dumpster in front of it, but I don't even know what the business is there of it. And then you got two or three others that's half- dilapidated on any given point in time. So, in our ordinance, and that's what I go back to, cars are parked in the same spot and or not moved for X periods of time. Again, we both know, we passed this. You can sit there and shake your head at me all you want, but.
I think you're being a little harsh towards.
I am, because, because the phone calls and the, that's your, that's your thing. I have mine, and, and the people that live here, that pay to live here, also have the right to have theirs. And that's who's been calling me, and that's what I'm trying to explain.
Let, yeah. Let me interrupt for a minute. Yes, we have an ordinance. Yes, we passed an ordinance. What you need to remember is that we are very small, and we don't have an enforcement officer. So what we expect is for people in the neighborhood to call, make a formal complaint. Then we can do something about it or send one of our officers up. We don't have a full-time enforcement officer.
I can promise you, there have been many emails and phone calls sent to here that no action has been taken on. And I know from them personally, and I can, I, I, and that, that one meeting, there were six of them sitting in that audience right there, that I know had called and sent personal, uh, emails here.
And we, the email said what?
We're complaining about the conditions of property in a line and referencing the ordinance.
Well.
And why do I know that? Because they all live around me, and they would stop at my house, knock on the door, and talk to me about it. And I would point them to the ordinance and say, reference that, send a note here. I'm not gonna be the one that brings those up here. That's not me, I want them to do it, they're the first, because then it just sounds like I'm the one that's doing it, right?
Well, we can man.
And by the way, I've been on this board, I don't know, for two years now, first time I ever really spoke up. And we love it.
Well.
You're doing this to approve the area. We understand, there's two sides.
But I, I think we need to address this outside of the meeting as far as maybe.
No, I want it to be official.
Well, it's official, it's official, it's on the record now. Can we address it, Steve, with the office personnel as to what all these calls and emails that they're getting that are making comments about trash that we need to take care of? Are we handling those calls, and are we doing something about them after the call?
Um, yes, I mean, I, first of all, I, I have not received any emails to, personally to me. Um, and, you know, typically, when we get a complaint, I refer to Chief Craig. He writes a report, there. We have not done a lot of enforcement, that is true. Um, we're just kind of getting off the ground with it, is the way I would put it. Um, I would say there's probably been, Chief Craig, me from around four or five cases.
Three, three or four that, that I've been directed to do anything, make a motion.
And isn't it correct that once you have contacted the person, you give them a warning? And then if they're, if we, if they don't do what they're supposed to do, we're supposed to give them a ticket?
My practice has been, once Steve gives me the complaint and says, go handle this, I contact the property owner, notify them of the complaint, notify them of the ordinance, sit down with them, educate them what the ordinance is, and what they need to do to remedy it. And then I work with them, giving them thirty, sometimes forty-five days, depending on whether it's hot or cold, to, to remedy that.
There, okay. Well, and I think when we passed that nuisance ordinance, we had a lot of people that didn't like that because they didn't want us running around saying, your grass is too tall, you got too many cars, you got this, you got that. They didn't really want us to become this city that's going to attack people who live here and want them to do things. So I, I think we're handling it the way we said we were going to when we passed the ordinance, and.
I find that the commercial properties tend to be the worst, maybe by nature. And, you know, even the, the joint that does the buggies and all that down there, I can't think of it. But I mean, it went from kind of neat things, neat and tidy, to exploded.
Yeah, they went bankrupt, didn't they?
Which place?
Where the four-wheelers are.
Um, but, but, but the point is that with the, with how we were almost seemingly going to become very limp-wristed and, uh, passover about passing from a residential to a commercial property, that just seems ludicrous to me.
Okay, well, I'm not, I'm not excited about you saying that board doesn't have integrity, because I, I don't.
Well, again, there was, the, the last board meeting, if that was true, what was brought up there, that would be a great stopping point. And then when you went from the two meetings ago to the comprehensive plan and what was in it, boy, it sure freaked up, and I came up here and talked to Steve about that directly. So, I mean, you can table a conversation, I'm good, but if we're gonna keep talking, I'll keep talking.
No, keep talking.
I would like to make one point. Um, so, the future land use map, the comprehensive plan, showed Beachwood as a mixed-use district from Highway five to Mr. Carter's property, basically, to, yes, to what we call the crow's foot. And that was my decision alone. Um, there's been discussion in general about Beachwood as a mixed-use district. There's a kind of a hodgepodge of zoning right now. And so the intent in proposing it as a mixed-use district was essentially to kind of clean up that zoning. What are we gonna allow along Beachwood? Is it residential, is it commercial, is it some mix? Um, and just to be very clear, at this point, the planning zoning meeting, I'll make it again. It was my decision alone, I did not speak to Chairman Schneider, any board member about how that map was drawn. Um, and I, it was a judgment call on my, on my own, I thought of it. Do I, do I include that stretch, yes or no? And I ended up, and I am doing, and I'll, you know, take responsibility for that. Um, it was a draft only, it went to the Planning and Zoning Commission, I think there was a very good thorough discussion about it. And so, that, that future land use map right now does not show mixed-use district, it's been removed after the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. So, I just want to make that clear, that that map was, you know, that was the map that I drafted alone without any sort of board, um, input. Yeah.
We may. If anybody's on the board, for, um, Beachwood, it's, I would, I would point out, that's, that's the, what is it, the chimney thing? Or before, what's that? I don't know what that little brown building is there. It's a business. You know, okay, that seems like it's nice. You start there, please drive over there and look, look at the, there's something built over there with about a half door. I don't know what that's all about. It's so funny, I almost ran off the river. You gotta, please, just drive over there, look at that. All right? Then you go up a little bit further to the right, now we got this big yellow boat with some rusty sign up there that's held in position with the two-by-four, which is a horrible safety thing it looks like. Doesn't look nice. And then it's got this board that's been there for, how long has that been there? I mean, that's not right. There, there's a few things that we can do, and I'd be happy to volunteer to knock on doors if you want me to, but I don't know what the codes are, which you can tell people what you can do and they can't do. But please, drive over there, start at where the chimney business is there, and just go up two or three doors there and look at it. There's dead trees up there, it's, it's horrible. Actually, Jim, this is great we live. Write the address down and just start writing an email. That's, that sounds like. That's what you need to do. If there is an address, sir, I mean, I don't know. But, please.
Perhaps when we address the twenty-six budget, we will eliminate some of the street plan and hire someone to go out and look at these properties. I mean, that's, that would be a solution. And start writing tickets, and start writing, start knocking on doors.
Of course, you can write a code, I mean, I don't know what's.
We have a code, it's called a nuisance plan, our ordinance.
It's a real strict code, too.
And it's, yeah.
Or we're not enforcing the problem.
We don't have someone to enforce, but I mean.
Not only, not chief.
Yeah.
No, I understand.
I, and if I had heard that we were getting tons of emails and calls about this stuff, we probably would have addressed it sooner. I didn't. You, you get a lot of calls and emails?
I, we don't get emails. I don't get any.
He said three or four, the chief did, and you guys received any?
They don't come to me, no.
Okay, well.
The ones I received, I, I, I received a couple.
Yeah, well, they shouldn't be calling the board member at home, they should be calling City Hall.
So take a picture with the address or something, right?
That's exactly what you do.
Yeah.
Take a picture and hand it in.
See if that's enough.
Yes, because, I mean, we will do something if someone complains, but if we don't hear the complaint.
If it's hidden in their backyard, I don't care, just when we drive down the hind drag, just please, okay?
And, you know, we'd have to look at it to see if it is against the ordinance, so I guess we'll just end up having to keep you busy, chief.
Yeah, we, we all, we all know that, that there's some spots that need to be done here. For instance, on mine, Sue's Road, uh, we had that, uh, trailer, that semi-trailer sitting there in front of Lindsay's house for how long? And it got to the point where it was getting really junky looking, right on the corner of five and, and sending notes. And he did finally move it, and boy, it cleaned it up, it looks great now, and all it took was for him to move that trailer.
Yeah. Did you need to say something, Andy?
I mean, I work about quite a little bit, if you want probably for us to start trying to kind of keep an eye on that stuff, we can do that.
That probably would.
It'll alleviate some of the pressure off of, you know, Scott and stuff like that. And then maybe I can sit down with one or two, yeah, and go over the ordinance so that we're all on the same page, so everybody understands. And I can work this from there, you know, me and Craig, we're running through the city all the time.
No, that.
But that, I just wanted to offer that.
Yeah, take, take a picture and bring it in with some sort of an address.
Somebody needs to get a hold, can get a hold of me.
So, to conclude, we will begin looking for bad properties and start writing tickets. And then we'll hear that, you said you weren't gonna do that. Anyway, is there any other visitors' comments?
Well, he had another concern, something about, uh, being on the board, what was that about? And I think he was referring to Steve Carter.
I wasn't, I wasn't gonna say any names, but you did.
Um, it's a state.
In the last, in the last meeting, it was brought up about residency, and we never clarified that.
I was here.
And I'm, I'm not asking, I'm asking for integrity, and all I said was, if that's true, that's wrong.
Well, it is kind of right on the line, in my opinion, soon gave the, the law, and so.
But what, I, I understand the law, sir. My issue is, is I'm just saying that if that's true, it's wrong. And I wanted to get my voice heard on that as well, because I had so many phone calls and so many questions about it, and I wanted this platform and that camera to hear me say how I personally felt about it. And I feel it's wrong, and it's that simple. It's either, you either are, or you're not. It's either right or it's wrong, it's that simple to me. There is no gray line, there is no thin line.
Maybe I have. I have a comment.
Okay.
Um, obviously, I shouldn't have been late by a couple nights on this, this stuff that was being.
Oh, you're being pudgy, shaw.
Um, so, I, I'm understanding there were some complaints about some properties, and also, how did, uh, the district in the Beachwood come up again? Or did? I just addressed that globally, because I, over the last two, well, last two meetings, you, I think you pretty much know, I've had several, several phone calls. But prior to that, all summer long, we have some primary residents in that year that live here full-time. But it's always funny when March, April gets here, and the weekenders start coming in, and they start knocking on the door saying, that place has stopped works, what's been done? And I say, you gotta call City Hall, you gotta send an email. And at, at least six different households has told me that they've done it. Now, if they not, they haven't, I can, I will be sure to go knock on their door and let them know that that's what they have to do. Jim, now I told Jim, and if Jim knows, I can assure you that there'll be at least ten other people there, right, Jim? See? So, and that's just it, and it's like, okay, if that's what we have to do, then that's what we'll have to do. But I will talk to the ones that said that they did call up here and find out that, that changed. And that would have been going back to April, May, that's not just the last two months. Thank you.
To give you an history on this, I'm, I'm one of the old, old persons in the room. But that is, God, they do, and I've been studying this for a long time, like ten years. And you know who the biggest offender of all of this was? She was the executor of the city. She had crap all over her property.
Still does.
And we couldn't get it fixed. Now, do you want us to spend time trying to fix this? Then you, the people that we represent, need to squalor, yell, demand that we fix this. Scott Craig has got X amount of time, he's got X amount, all of us have X. We need to know what you want to do. We don't always know that. Quite honestly, this, can you imagine how big this would be if you're in Washington, D.C.? We can't even handle four hundred fifty-five people because of little, little jacking around stuff. So, please bring it to our attention. You're, you're a part of the city, this village. Let us know. I, I've heard, I think I've heard it all, I don't want to hear anymore, but I have to. I want to hear, okay? Everybody on this board wants his place to be better. Everybody in this room wants us to do better. We can't always because of money, right? But we, look, we've done some pretty good things in the last five years, so.
There's no question about it, but that's, you're right, as long as there's an ordinance now, it's, we, now we know what the procedure is, you take a photograph, the address, and we deliver that, right?
Not only an ordinance, but you gotta execute it. You can't just have it in the books and the file in the file cabinet.
I agree.
It, so it has to be brought to our attention that it needs attention, because there's too many things that need attention. So to prioritize, when we wish you happy birthday, we want you to know that we think of you. What we want you to do is to tell us what you need, and we'll fix it. We will fix it if we can, sometimes we can't because of money, because of law, ordinance. But we're, we're all in this together.
No, I agree, it's good, hey, good, so I know, wow, ordinance, I'm gonna do it.
Are there any other visitors' comments on any other subjects?
The only thing I want to add to what he said was that it's good to have code enforcement, it's good to have those things, but that can also be one of the most contentious issues of saying we'll deal with it.
Exactly.
And it can get out of control.
And when we passed that ordinance, we had plenty of people saying, you don't need that ordinance. But we passed that ordinance, so now you're telling us you want us out there writing tickets. So, can we move on now? Uh.
I'm not sure if I want to move on. No, kidding, go ahead. I could have eaten my time to Jeff now.
No, thank you.
Good job, Mike.
Let's hear about sewers.
We want the stuff to be out there. It's probably smell better.
How about the stuff in this, right?
I guess Caitlin is not coming?
No, she had a concert.
Okay, Jeff, you want to introduce yourself to those who don't know who you are?
Certainly, I'm Jeff Meadows, I'm a contractor, I've been engineering, I'm working on, uh, the expansion of the lower-coast water treatment. So, uh, so Steve, you want to give an update on the Water Commission meeting?
Um, oh, yeah, just very briefly. So, as, as you all know, we applied for SRF funding, there's a long process to, we were approved last week by the Missouri Clean Water Commission. Only goes one point eight million in grant, one point two million loan, plus or minus a little bit. We have not received any notice yet from M D N R, but we expect that rather soon. And once we get that notice, there'll be, you know, more work to do, so on and so forth. Jeff's really here to provide an update, and I know it's a big project for us, and, uh, we cleared one, you know, pretty significant hurdle, of course. We, we are approved, and so Jeff can kind of take it from here.
We're approved for what?
Um, the funding, the.
Funding?
Lowest loan and grant, and again, it's one point eight million in grant, one point two million in lowest just loan. And the project is under design, we had a rather lengthy meeting here, probably two weeks ago, maybe. Um, and we invited Jeff to come and just give the board an update.
What's the term of the repayment on the loan?
Uh, I'm not sure.
It's taken for twenty years. Twenty years? And there's a bond?
If you're utilizing the voter-approved bond, that's a.
So we still have to go through that process?
So you've already, the voters have already approved all of the. Yeah, so, and I can, I'll talk through kind of the next steps as we move forward.
Thank you, Jim.
You've had, the, the, the great news is, as Steve mentioned, I mean, that, that it was on the Clean Water Commission, they approved the intended use plan, which the, the city was on, uh, total of a three-million-dollar project or a little. Told about a $3 million project or a little over at a 60% grant. So that's, that's about as good as it gets these days. So that's, that's great, great news. Uh, so the steps that we go through in order to get, you know, from the concept level, through the funding, uh, design and all the way through construction hours. So the the first step is the facility plan. So we've submitted that facility plan with the application. Um, and then the technical review has been performed, which has been approved. Uh, but there's also an environmental review where we have to send out clearance letters to interested agencies and so forth. That took place last month. We sent out those requests, clearance letter requests. Um, so the next step, and we received no negative comments. Uh, now DNR's environmental folks have had an opportunity to review it. Their first priority was to take care of the projects that they had on the last year's intended use plan. So now, now they started to move on to to our our intended use plan. So we have received notification to review it. Everything's good. The next step for the environmental is to hold a public hearing, which we have scheduled for November 18th. Here, I think it's at four o'clock, yes. So, um, and the purpose of that meeting, it's just to go through the project, talk about the environment, how it uh, what it is now, how it will improve, will it improve environment, of course, you know, um, that type of thing. So we will conduct that environmental, uh, public meeting on the 18th. So with that, we anticipate the full approval of the facility plans. And that'll be the technical and the environmental side of it. We expect that approval to take place in December. So that gives us the authorization to submit our plans and specifications. It actually gives us authority to go ahead and proceed with the the final design, which we have already been working on. So we're anticipating submitting that final design in February, March timeframe. That will go through a review process. Uh, once we get construction permit, um, then we go through bidding, other bidding process. About 60 days from time we advertise the contract award. Uh, only then will we be ready to actually close on the loan. So we're probably looking at sometime next summer, uh, before we have a contract in place with a contractor and ready for loan closing and and move forward with construction. In the meantime, uh, the, what they have is a, what they call a due diligence process on the financial side. So Steve will be working with the DNR's accountants on the the financing side of it and the repayment of, you know, the ability to repay. Which Steve has experienced in the financial side a lot of times. Um, there'd be an outside financial, uh, municipal advisor that's hired to do that work. Steve's budgeting, uh, taking the lead on that and hopefully give the city a good chunk of money in doing so.
How much money upfront are you talking?
So it it'll be, once the loan closes, it'll be at the service.
No, I'm talking about before that process. You said there was due diligence? How much money are we putting up for that due diligence?
Uh, if the city doesn't, it counts. There would be no money. So it'll be done with.
Steve's doing that.
I mean, I think. Yes, we'll buy it. Tens of thousands of dollars.
So it's okay, as long as somebody's in charge.
Yep. As Steve mentioned, we had a very productive meeting a couple of weeks ago with Caitlin was here as well, um, walked through all of the technical aspects of it. Uh, the project, uh, the process, uh, equipment vendors that they would be performing and so forth, based on their operating experience. I think that's, that's something very important to make sure that the operator understands the design. We understand their, uh, uh, what they process that they like to use, any concerns that they have, we can address in the design. So that during construction, that they end up getting a, a project that they are able to operate and maintain and have a very positive experience.
And you're over, your company's overlooking all this, right?
Yes, sir.
So you are the chief engineer. Are you guaranteeing this is going to work?
So there'll be a so we're we're going to jump to the design, working with with Caitlin to to achieve that.
We don't know who that's going to be yet.
We don't, we we're going to lose time, but then we will bid the construction. So there'll be a construction contract.
We will see that construction.
We oversee the construction process, yes, sir.
We had some sewer things that haven't worked out. That's. So what I'm concerned with is your firm, which some of us have bet. Um, you're going to oversee this and be responsible and have the liability.
We'll oversee all the construction, make sure that it's built in accordance with the the plans and specifications and, you know, and and that's based on and to meet your compliance requirements. And and we have a team and and certainly your point, that's what we do every day here. Uh, we work almost exclusively in municipal water and sewer. Uh, so we're doing probably a test and environmental treatment plans right now.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to hear it out of your mouth, say you're responsible, because I have seen a lot of things that haven't worked out so far. And I've only been on the board for a while.
You bet.
When I'm getting on.
Thank you.
You bet.
Good job.
Happy to hear about that grant.
Absolutely. Cause that's great news. I believe also you're receiving statements for locations for the base five water and sewer project. Unfortunately, I'd love to continue to work with you on that project as well.
Thanks, Ian.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, ordinances, we have resolution 2025-16A.
Uh, resolution 2025 dash 16, a resolution of the village of Sunrise Beach, Missouri, accepting and authorizing an agreement with Camden County for law enforcement dispatch services.
We can motion approve?
I have a question. We paid $1,300 last year, and now we're going to pay 1,300 now? Or when do we have the next payment of 1,300?
I'm sorry, 1,300? Or you're talking about 13,000?
13,000.
So that's per year? So as of last year January, we went into an agreement for 13,000.
And we pre, we paid.
Actually, we did not pay that. So somehow their invoicing and our agreement did not follow through. So this is a new agreement to start a new.
So we're going to pay 13,000 and then we're going to turn around, what's next 13 due?
Probably the following year. It's a yearly contract too for dispatch.
So we're already behind.
Right?
Aren't we behind?
Yeah, the contract, I believe, renewals on January.
Yeah, the 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 contract terms are we pay 13,000 upon the execution of the agreement, you know, within the next couple of days. And then we would pay 13,000 for 2026. We'd invoice.
When is that due?
Um, we can pay it either in one month sum, we can pay it quarterly, we can pay it in monthly installments.
When is it due?
Um, I don't know. It's due for the calendar year.
We're not in arrears, are we?
Um, no.
That's fine.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. An old business, this is the second reading of 2025-17.
Bill number 2025 dash 17, an ordinance amending the village of Sunrise Beach personal manual to provide for amended work hours for the Sunrise Beach Police Department. Second reading. Motion for the second reading?
I'm moving for the secondary.
Roll call vote. Greg Ward?
Yes.
Steve Parkoff?
Yes.
Susan Snyder?
Yes.
Steve Carter?
Yes.
And Michael George?
Yes.
Hey, the department reports, correct?
All right, uh, I'm going to just read through this real quick. There is some really good stuff on there that I want to highlight. We were officially awarded the 50,000 for the Blue Shield Grant. Uh, today I attended the workshop on that, so we should be able to order the new dash cams and body cams here pretty soon for that. Uh, the new Durango turned into total conversation magnet in September. It was a huge success at the Beverly Fair Parade. I had been several, invited to several youth events throughout Stover, Candice, and the Lake area. We were also contacted by a car show club that wanted to get into the Lego dark scene for years, but they never really had a put in. And after seeing our new build, they want to collaborate with the police department to bring a new car show to Sunrise Beach and the Lake area to be hosted by Frankie and Luis. The Westside Shop of the Hero that Lieutenant Schultz has spearheaded is in full swing now officially its own 501(c)(3). Historically, the chamber's been assisting with managing the funds, but requested we end that agreement because the program has been such a success. Grown too large to be under their umbrella. Uh, next fundraising event will be at Westside Pub on the 30th from 5:00 PM to 8:00, 8:00 PM. Be great to see one or two of all you guys out there, even support that event. Most, uh, the other update on a grant is I did receive a $1,250 grant from the Wilson Foundation. This is essentially a family that I know that has different grants throughout the foundation. And we usually get, I think on average, $10,000 here from them. Uh, they're closing at the end of the year, trans micro bonds and reached out and see if I wanted some. But lastly, I need Officer Onstock to come up here. I think everybody's met Officer Onstock. So I'd like to recognize him for just a moment. Um, in September, Officer Onstock completed the A-Ride, which is Advanced Roadside Impair Driving Enforcement Course at Missouri State Highway Patrol Academy. This is a 16-hour course on recognizing drug impairment, distinguishing medical mimics, and improving documentation. This is a really advanced course for a first-year officer. So we were very proud that not only did he want to take it upon himself, but that he excelled at it. On September 23rd, Officer Onstock participated in a Regional Saturation Saturday operation hosted by MODOC and Mothers Against Drunk Driving, where Lake area agencies focused on enforcement and impaired driving. In recognition for his contributions, MAD provided us with a challenge coin. Officer Onstock continues to lead our department at DWI RS and demonstrates strong commitment to roadway safety. I'm very proud of the passion Officer Onstock has for DWI enforcement, and we're presenting him with this challenge coin.
Good job.
That it?
That's it.
Okay. Andy. Public Works would like to chat a little bit about what he has found out, uh, bidding on shelter for our equipment.
I just want you guys to know, I did turn around and went up, uh, Robert Seig was talking to a lot of guys. They were bidding on buildings. One being a steel building that would run about 40,000. That's put up with the insulation, got two from Martin. Those are wood buildings. They're a little bit more expensive. They're in the 40,000 dollar range. Uh, I put concrete back out to bid. Uh, Steve didn't, wasn't very sure about the pit. So I put another bid out to do about the bid. Uh, you're probably looking at about 20,000. I know that, um, it's kind of a hot subject in a way. Uh, I talked to Susan, thinking about trying to relook at maybe something else during like 2C cans with a hoopper up. The only thing I would really like to ask is the concrete. Now, just sitting here in this meeting, after people have been odd in my office and cold and this and that, I invite you to come out to my office because I don't have one. So if I could have one thing out of anything, it would be the concrete. At least it's a solid base to be able to work on equipment that we're going to roll around that metal boards to sell like that. If we do need to. Over the last two winters, I borrowed Hanes' garage. The fire department last year was nice enough to let us go in and use theirs to work on the cloud. And then as more people know, last winter, we stood out here at minus 15 degrees weather. In all of the elements, every pair of that spreader kept on going. I'm just looking for a place to dive in and to be able to work on stuff. That also helps where you can expand. We can start fixing our own pump. I don't have a place to do that. So that's kind of the general idea. I'll find out a little bit more about C cans and hoop building a little bit more. And then I'll just revise you guys on the next month.
Didn't we consider budgeting this for about $30,000?
The concrete.
No, not the concrete, but the whole, whole.
The whole thing. You're, if I go C can, I'll be pretty close. It'll be about 35, is what I'm thinking.
Well, I can't remember what you brought up before, but I thought we gave a metal building to cover some of our equipment for $30,000. And that's what we idolized and thought it would be something we could do. And now you're talking how much more money? Cause I see, well, I I looked at this that was sent to me.
That was budgeted for 30,000. I had nothing to do with that budget.
Okay. And so what do you think you really need?
Well, right now, I'm taking a while, yeah. Knocking out the pit, which was just in what they needed. Looking at their bid, we brought out five ranches left, put me at 20,000. C can running 40 footers, running at about 20, 2,500 apiece.
Total. Give me the total. I'm too stupid to add this up.
If I do 2C can, the hoop building and concrete.
35? Well, when I, when I look at this write-up, I must be really literate. It looks like to me it's close to 100.
No, it isn't. He uses 100. Take a look.
Who uses it?
State uses 100. I do not. The building at Moses is 44,000. Concrete right now with the pit is 25,000. Where you all rounded up, 45. So you're talking $70,000 down 100,000. I had no question possible there.
Well, I'm waiting right now. I couldn't add. Didn't Chief get a building for the police cars? Has that ever?
He's got a car for.
Did that get put up?
That'll get put up once I expect. You'll be back next week.
Karen?
I've been running this.
Make a copy of this and give this to Andy?
Yeah, sure.
Steve has found some other bids for you too. So he's going to give you a copy of them.
All this morning, I'm really just trying to be able to dive in, you know.
Yeah.
There's only so many floor that they're going to let me use there. And I can't expect any, they've been great. They really have. We had a manufactured school last week. I borrowed all their welders. They're off everything. They're, they're very good about it, but I don't want to do that guy. Over. Does it well.
Well, he, he kind of showed me a little bit about this list that he has, and there's some real reasonable prices on there. So what I would like you to do is, um.
Like Steve, I'd get with you anytime.
Maybe the two of you can get together and and try to figure something out that's, that's less. We did budget it in 25 to 30,000. So if we have to go more than that, I'm afraid we may end up going in next year's budget. But I mean, here's like a carport commander, 30 by 50 by 12, 13, 5. So there's a lot of good things on here. And, uh, if you guys would get together on that, maybe we'll talk about it again next, next meeting. Okay?
Yeah, cause we've, I've got some bids that came in, uh, with some pretty good sized metal structures, even with concrete included, um, Metal America come in 47,000. That's concrete and building.
Now, I found another concrete guy that said he could do it, that a 30 by 60 for 7,000. If it was prepared, if it's ready, you've got the rock ready, if it's all laid out and everything, 7,000. So that's a far cry. Uh, pardon me?
Including steel?
No, no, the concrete.
Does it include the steel?
Oh, I guess. Yeah. Cause we told him, uh, four inch concrete slabs for a building set on. And he said, if it's all prepared and everything, seven grand. So let's, let's get, uh, you guys together and talk about it a little bit more so we, so we can get the most out of the, out of our money.
Look at anything.
Okay.
Uh, the other thing real quick, mapping is all, but, um, have to get both the actual main lines and everything put onto them. But the rest of it, to the depth that I know of, outside of nine meters, which you can't. Uh, five of this area, there's still, shall we say?
Okay. Did you get both of the fire extinguishers fixed and? Did you get both of the fire extinguishers fixed and back welding?
Both of the fire hydrants.
Fire, fire hydrants, okay.
We did get our spare parts in line, so we need them, so we're going to spare those up on that. Like I said, mapping, the only thing missing is your main lines on it. Again, please remember, if you come in and look at it, that does not alleviate you from dig wreck. Uh, no matter what.
No, I understand that, but it's good for us to have.
You know, when they come in here and say, oh, the water lines, you still have to call dig wreck, very important.
Right, right. Okay.
Other than that. All I got for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, Steve, you have anything left to talk?
Just one item, of course, you have my report, um, engineering selection for Phase Five Water and Sewer. So as the board knows, we want to go after the next round of SRF funding. We, uh, are planning to do Center Road, Northview, Rock Harbor, and Phase Five. Total project budget around three million, actually, we'll get short of that, which includes both water and sewer. Um, it gets a little complicated from there, you have to, uh, SRF runs on two separate tracks, water on one side, sewer on the other. Uh, we are, the R Q is for an engineer to handle both, um, tracks, if you will. We had five responses, today was a deadline, the responses are on the board table. Um, and the next step is to make a selection. And here, um, kind of, you know, it's up for the board, uh, to kind of direct how you want to proceed. You can do it through some sort of internal committee, uh, that maybe utilizes, um, Susan, one of the board members. Full board meet with, uh, the engineers, we could do some, you know, hybrid of that. I do have a, a ranking sheet that I also put out on the table. One thing that we could do is, if you all want, we could have, uh, the individual ward numbers could each review and rank and score each firm. Return those to me, and then from there, we would develop what's called a shortlist, or the, you know, the top ranked firms, and then interview them. At some future date, I would not suggest it happen, maybe a board meeting, it probably should be a special meeting if the full board wants to do it. And it's everything I just said, there's no obligation to do those interviews. We could do, um, you know, a process in which we rank them internally and make the selection essentially internally, and then, um, and then negotiate a contract with the top ranked engineer and bring it to the board, so.
I, uh, would prefer that, I, I do like this idea for you guys, everybody has this whole stack. So if you all rank those the way he is, is telling you to do, then I personally want to be in to hear the ones that we've chosen out of this speak. I got a lot out of that, you know? To me, that tells me how committed they are when they come to speak to us. You know, it's me, I, Michael, you were with me last time we did this, and actually, we chose Archer. I thought it was, was great, so I'm going to do it, and if one or any of you want to do it, um, we can do that after this, so if you want to get these turned in, and next week, when, when you've got time to see who, how it came out, we'll decide about a time to meet and, and do that.
So are we talking about a full board meeting?
I don't know, are we, who want, who is interested in doing anything like that? You sit and listen to the engineer say what he.
I'm definitely interested.
I'm interested.
We don't want a lot of questions, we just want a presentation to listen to. Okay, so Carter, Barcock, myself.
Um, okay, so.
We can do that up at Oakstar.
Here's what I would suggest, then, i- if, if you would, you know, as a little bit of time, Bob, but, uh, look through those different submittals, rank them, if you have any questions about, you know, how you need to do it, just get ahold of me. Um, and then I think the next regular board meeting is November tenth. I would like to do it previous, prior to that, if you could. Um, I don't have a calendar in front of me, but I think the week of the twenty seventh, um, would be where I would target that, uh, maybe even say.
To have that meeting?
Yeah.
I think that's Thanksgiving meeting.
No, no. Month before, October twenty seventh, yeah.
You're talking about November?
No, October.
Oh, okay.
I think it would be good to select a firm prior to the November tenth meeting, and then we could hopefully negotiate a contract before that meeting and get the engineer a contract.
Before the tenth?
And I know it's a bit of a quick timeframe, but I think it would be helpful. Um, the SRF deadline is March first, and you know, have a holiday, time gets away.
Well, that's not giving us a lot of time to set up interviewing time, so.
I know.
So you guys need to get that in really fast.
I will be gone, um, Thursday, Friday, and Monday, Thursday, Friday this weekend, and Monday the next week. If you can get back to me by, say, Wednesday or Thursday, next week, it'd be fine. I also want to have the staff look at them. So, you know, I'll, I'll, I'll do, I'll do it myself, I'd like that public works, and, and then, I'm not sure whether Erin or I would, I'd like to have the staff take a look at it as well. And then really what happens is we combine all those scores, and then that spits out the top two worth to the. At that point, I'll get with you, and we'll determine, um, the date for the interviews and notify the engineers.
Okay.
Sound like a plan?
Yep.
Okay, very good.
Okay, has everyone looked over the bills, including the one that Erin just gave us?
My, my bare bills.
So. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do we have anything else? Anybody, anybody?
Make a motion to adjourn.
The second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.